Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the Monday, August 10th, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. If you would all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Baruch is absent. Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Zee?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
And, sir, in preparation for Item 10A1, the Assistant City Manager will be opening all bids for the electric utility franchise, and one bid has been received as of this time.
Okay. If there are any further bids, please bring them forward to the Clerk now. The bidding is now closed. The bids will be opened in brief descriptions prepared. Do we have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
Motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Looks like there are no proclamations tonight, is that right? Okay. Any oaths of offices? No?
No.
Doesn't appear to be any of those either. Okay. Why don't we move on to public comment and requests? Would you like to summarize the written comments, please?
We had a comment from Johanna Berry of 111 East Jefferson Street, and she wrote to congratulate staff, the staff who started the food recycling program, the composting program. Lisa Veruxis of 301 Grove Avenue wrote to express her concerns about the West Broad area plan, including how population increase would impact the nature of the city and the schools, and the need to address the automotive services that residents in the area will require. And then the following citizens asked that the City Council require a new first reading for the Mason Row project because of the changes to the application. Rohini Winters of 324 Grove Avenue, Albert Tibbetts of 305 Grove Avenue, Meredith Donley of 208 Grove Avenue, Kimberly Hoskins Propst 326 Grove Avenue, Nancy Robinson Schaefer 206 Grove Avenue, Anita Shalit 202 Grove Avenue, Laura Lindsay 331 Grove Avenue, Aileen Orfoly 1008 Jennifer Lane, Rebecca La Toraca 205 Grove Avenue, David Schwend 602 Dorchester Road, Deborah Gray's 237 Irving Street, Trish Horowitz 106 North Cherry Street, Tariq Riyad 1008 Jennifer Lane, and Christina New 413 Lincoln Avenue.
Thank you. Are there any speaker slips been submitted for tonight's meeting?
No, sir.
Is there any member of the public that wishes to address council at this time? And you can either speak now or when your item is to be called, that's up to you. Would you -- all right, looks like we may have one in progress. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at tonight's hearing? If so, please fill out a speaker slip with your name and address when you come up to speak. Please limit your comments to three minutes, giving your name and address before you speak, for the record. Would you like to speak now, sir? Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. My address, 324 Grove Avenue. And when we last met, there was a lot of talk about Mason Row, and since then, we've had a new submittal and have reviewed that. And if you've looked closely, there is an excellent feature, which is a turnaround for semis. They pull in on Grove, at the far south end, kind of at the lower level, below the main level, and there's enough room to stack four semis. They can pull in, back up, pull out. Okay? That's great. The question is, where was this before? What were we buying? So, at the time, with the previous submission that made it through first reading, there was no place for a semi, not one. Not one semi could park at Mason Row. There were a couple thirty-foot, you know, for a, you know, single-axle delivery truck, you know, inside on Mason Row, and the other two, when we come to discover, were on West Street. It looks like, you know, maybe the default plan was they'll stack up if, on West Street, kind of like they do for 7-Eleven now. So, the point is, it's there, it's great, but it didn't get caught during the process as we went to first reading, and it's a major thing. The size of this turning circle, which is what it is, is sixty by 160 feet. It's massive. It's proper. It's appropriate. It's there. But, so, there's been a lot of discussion on whether we should go back to first reading, and I would highlight that as a particular function that should have been caught, should have been caught by the process, should have been highlighted and answered before we got to first reading. So, if we miss that, if the process missed that, what else could we benefit by going back and just doing a slow, slow and methodical process? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this point? You may also have a chance to speak when an item of interest to you is called as well. But it looks like there are no other speakers. Are there any council requests? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this the time? I just wanted to bring up the scheduling matter. The Virginia Municipal League Fall Conference is coming in early October, and at some point fairly soon, we might consider doing what we did last year, which was moving our work session off of that Monday night, when the VML meeting in Richmond's going on to, I think we moved it to Wednesday. So, I just wanted to file that request here and have you and the manager and others discuss that.
I can barely hear you. Is the microphone as bad as they sound out there? Is there someone maybe who could speak to the AV person and see if we can improve the sound quality just a bit? Did you just say you're, there's a VML conference you wish to address?
Yes. The VML Conference, the Fall Conference Annual is on early October, and that would conflict with our regular Monday meeting, and I'm just requesting that we consider moving our work session, that first October Monday work session, to a Wednesday, in case anybody, staff or members, wanted to attend the VML meeting in Richmond.
It sounds like a pretty good idea. I know people, did we do that last year as well? Okay. What's the date? I'm sorry.
The conference is October 4th through the 6th, so the council meeting would need to move to October 7th. Council work session would need to move to October 7th.
Does anyone have any objections? Maybe we have to look at our calendars, but at this point, does anyone have any objections to that? Why don't we pencil that in and then confirm it with everyone's calendars when they've had a chance to vet it a little more thoroughly? Any other council requests? Okay. Why don't we go on to the report of the City Manager? Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. The first thing I'd like to do during the manager's report is invite Officer James Brooks, Detective Missy Elliott, and Captain Tom Polera, and Chief Mary Gavin to come forward. We had a -- we had the privilege, as a region, and Fairfax County in particular, was host to the Fairfax, to the 2015 World Police and Fire Games, and it was a time throughout the month of July where we played host to thousands of public safety officers, fire and police, from around the world, and really celebrated the competitive spirit and public service from our public safety officers. And the City Falls Church participated in a big way, and so, tonight, we wanted to celebrate a little bit of our achievements and our participation in those games, and we'll start with Officer James Brooks. James had one of the toughest jobs. He was the chief referee for a number of the soccer matches, including the gold medal match between Mexico and which other country?
Military police of Brazil.
And the military police of Brazil. And so, this is, this was a match in which the rule of law needed to be laid down with a firm hand, and Officer Brooks did that, and he's actually a very accomplished referee and served in that capacity here. And I believe you work a lot of matches around the region, including some in major league soccer as well, and so, he kept the peace there. Captain Tom Polera was on the ice with the, with our regional hockey team, and our team, ultimately, we beat the Canadians, which was the high-water mark. We lost the eventual gold medal winners, which was the team of guns and hoses out of Las Vegas, Nevada, but Tom represented us really well. This is a very high-level hockey that was being played. Detective Missy Elliott brought home the bronze as an individual in the golf bracket, and it was a lot of intimidation she had to stare down. She put her local knowledge to work, but brought home the medal and represented us really well in the golf event. And here's our chief. Chief Gavin came in, finished the triathlon, and we were all there to cheer her on, and she was coming up with all sorts of things, like, well, you know, I didn't train at all for this event, and I wasn't even sure when it was supposed to start or where it was supposed to be. And the next thing you know, she brings home the gold for her bracket in the triathlon. And here's a picture of her after the finish. She looks a whole lot better than Tom and I after she's finished the triathlon, and there she is, on the podium, on the top rung.
Well, Mr. Shields, why don't you go back to that picture for just a second? What were you, I'm just curious, what were you wearing?
Are you talking about that one? Yeah, that's a good picture.
What were you wearing in that picture? Were you participating in the police games?
They wouldn't let me participate.
All right. Well, you look sharp, you look sharp anyway, in the spandex or whatever it is.
I just ran, wore my spandex for style points. But it was, we're, as a city, we're just very proud of our participation. It was an event that I think was very well-run by the region and represented the region very well. We did have, we were all really sad during the cycling event. We lost a participant to a fatality, which is a tragedy during the event, one of the participants from Brazil. But everyone came together and rallied from that point, I think showed great respect for all the athletes and for the friends and family of that athlete. But I did want to give a chance, just for competitors to also, if they had any experiences they wanted to share as well, but take the opportunity to share the achievement with the City Council and the community.
Well, it's really exciting. I'm very proud of the work you do on a day-to-day basis, but it's pretty incredible, the kind of athletic skills you all present in your off-hours, so our hats are off to you, and we're, as I said, we're very proud of the work you've done. Have you guys got any medals with you by chance? I think it'd be really cool. Why don't you bring them on up here? We'll congratulate you and check that out. But congratulations.
The only comment I'd add is, we got a tremendous amount of support from the community, and we appreciate that.
Should we get a, can we get a picture with? project, and then after that, a more detailed update on the Mason Row project and the West Broad Street area plan and the status of those efforts. Just real briefly, on the Southwest Street project, we did begin construction last week with the replacement of more underground utilities that are in the street there. That resulted in road closures for a brief period of time, and that will happen again this week and early next week, with some short road closures as we're replacing stormwater facilities in West Street. The major work, however, will get underway in about four weeks with the rebuilding of the entire road, and it's going to be after the Labor Day holiday, and so, we will work really hard with the community to make sure that everybody's prepared for that, and the basic message is, for anybody who's traveling through that area, that that West Street will be for local traffic only, and so, we ask people to try to find a, to find a different route. We'll be communicating that to Fairfax County as well. The Mason Row project, as the council is aware, we have received a revised application from Spectrum Development, and staff is analyzing the application. Now, it's been distributed to staff, so it's under review. I wanted to talk just a little bit about the process going forward and the schedule that we're, the framework of the schedule that we're working, we'll work with the council and our boards and commissions on, and the community, and the developer. The next sort of public step that we have on our schedule is for the developer to come to your council meeting on September 8th, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day, to brief the council on changes to their application. And then from there, we can have some discussion about, really have the council weigh in on what the schedule should look like going forward. We do anticipate, and we've communicated this to the developer, that just through the natural process of reviewing the application with all of our boards and commissions, that allow adequate public comment on the plans, that the boards and commissions really can't be expected to provide a report back to the City Council until the November timeframe. And then we would get those comments back, synthesize those, give a briefing to the City Council, also allow the developer time to make any last, final changes in response to things that we'll identify as we review the application. And so, we would anticipate that the earliest, that action, that in terms of consideration of the plan by the City Council, for any type of action would be in late November or early December, and we can finalize those plans once our analysis is complete, and do that in collaboration with the City Council. But we do want to just lay out, you know, in terms of what people's expectations should be over the coming months, that this is, that action will not be taken, obviously, in the August timeframe or in September, but there will be, if the council so chooses, there'll be the referral out to boards and commissions, either formally or informally, and that's really the will of the council. We don't think that technically it would require a new first reading, but on September 8th, we can have a discussion on council as to whether the council wants to take that formal step or just informally refer it out to the boards and commissions, since it is a submission of an application, not a brand-new application, or a resubmission of an existing application, not a brand-new application. We are still working with the neighborhood on Park Avenue and the church on parking regulations, and we, and I just want to take some time to work through, particularly with the church. The church is going to be most directly and immediately impacted by any new regulations, and so, we wanted to make sure that we've had a process that we go through with the church, if there are going to be any regulations that the parishioners would have to comply with, with respect to residential-only type of parking arrangements on Park Avenue. But that dialogue is ongoing with the church and with the neighbors, and we hope to have that resolved fairly soon. So, that's an update on the process. I wasn't prepared to speak really on the substance of the application tonight, except to say that all of the application materials are on the city website, and we know that a lot of people are looking at them, which is, which is good, and we welcome all the comments that we're receiving on the application. That will help us in our review. Lastly, I just wanted to report on the West Broad Street area plan. That had initially been scheduled to come to council in September for a work session, walking tour, and possible action by the City Council on that plan in September. We've received a great deal of comment on that plan as well. We want to take time to address those comments, work with the Planning Commission, EDA, on their comments as well. So, currently, we're, on the council's schedule, we're planning at this work session that Mr. Duncan referred to on October 5th, but we'll possibly move that to Wednesday, October 7th, to have a briefing on the West Broad area plan, a potential walking tour with a planning commission invited to that as well, and then the council consideration at the end of October. But we'll work with the council on the final scheduling of that as well. But we've gotten a great deal of comment on that plan and discussion with the mayor. We want to just make sure that we've taken sufficient time to address all those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Any comments to Mr. Shields' comments? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you for the report on the Broad and West project. I wanted to ask you just briefly about a couple of emails that we'd received about the Cherry Street situation. These are hyper-local questions. The broom for the tennis court and the sod, grass, the progress thereon or lack of. Do we have anything that we can report about the status of the plantings, particularly on Cherry Street?
With all of our tennis courts, we typically blow them off twice a week with an air blower, but on the request, we've got a broom that will be delivered to the tennis court so that the regular users of it can sweep off the courts as needed. In terms of the landscaping on the site, we know that, you know, particularly some of the later plantings, they were planted late in the planting season in July. We have all of those plantings under bond, and so, we will, any that die or don't make it, they will be replaced, and that's on the contractors, that's in the contractor's contract. There was a request by the neighborhood for some of the areas that we seeded with straw and seed as opposed to sod, and that's on the school part of the project. What we have asked the neighbors is to let us get into the fall, let's get through a growing season, just to see how the grass comes in. It was not part of the plans that that area in particular be sodded, and we don't currently have plans to sod that area, but our latest communication with the neighbors has been to, let's see how the grass grows in.
Just, thank you. A couple more things. A citizen wrote in, and this is something that we've seen in other communications, about two issues, just sort of generally speaking, and that would be traffic volumes on Broad and Washington, and vacancy rates in our mixed-use ground floor projects. Not for tonight to answer, but I thought perhaps over the council's recess period, it'd be helpful if staff could prepare and present online some information about both of those. If we have any historic data of traffic along Broad and Washington, you've referred to it a couple of times in meetings, I just think that might be helpful for people to see if traffic is increasing about the same, whatever we have, I think might be helpful to put out there for the public. And on the vacancy rate, I'm sure that we have, I know the Economic Development Office has some data on that, and I think that would be a helpful number to have out there also.
I will get those numbers. I do know, I can say anecdotally, that our retail vacancy rate is in the low-single digits, but I will get that number out to the City Council. We keep track of that on a monthly basis, and we'll get our VDOT traffic counts that we have and publicize those as well.
Okay. Great. And finally, and just briefly, there was an exchange about the situation on 604 North Oak, where some new houses are being, excuse me, some new houses are being built, and I think there's some staff communication, again, not for tonight, but there was a question about the timetable, which the problems were addressed, and apparently, the situation now is okay, but there was a citizen question about whether the time that it took to make the situation okay is sort of what we should expect, or if we could, you know, expect a little speedier response. So, just be curious to your thoughts on that. Perhaps you could share that in a communication to council by email. Thank you.
Right. Ms. Connolly, and then Mr. Snyder, Fitzman. Ms. Connolly?
Mr. Shields, I just have a question on the different, on Mason Row. The difference between doing a second or a third first reading and just referring it to boards and commissions? A lot of citizens wrote in today requesting another first reading, and you just said that we could instead just refer it to boards and commission relying on the previous first reading. What's the difference? Can you just explain that a little bit?
Well, from a technical perspective, the only item that has a first reading and a second reading is the rezoning. The special exception is by resolution, the Comp Plan Amendment is by resolution, so those don't have formal first or second readings, just the rezoning does. To trigger a new first reading, the rezoning would need to be substantially different in some respect, and it isn't. The request for the rezoning is basically as it has been, and so, it's really, I think, just a question of kind of what form of action the council would prefer to take, and as a practical matter, with a nodding of heads in an informal way, if the council was, after your briefing, was comfortable with the process going on, then that could be done in that informal manner. If there's a desire to take a more formal vote on referring it out to the boards and commissions, that option is available to the council as well. I think it's probably, in the context of a gatekeeper function, it will require a great deal of attention and work by our boards and commissions, and so, with the changes to the application, I think the question for the council is, is it, do you want your boards and commissions to spend the, you know, the month of September and October working on this application in its current form? I think that will be the, really, the point of decision after the briefing on the 8th.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we saw in our emails and was summarized by the city clerk, we have quite a number of citizens who have asked for first reading, and I think there are a couple things that are on their mind that I think we need to address. The first is, I think they're concerned about, is there a possibility that any decisions formally or informally will be made this summer? I think the answer to that is no. And with this new timetable that you've set forth, I think you've tried to respond to that. I think the second thing they're concerned about is, when do the citizens get to see this? When do they get the comment? What town hall meetings and opportunities will they have? I think boards and commissions input is certainly a key part of what we do, but general public input as well, particularly from the neighborhood, and frankly, all of those, not only just in the immediate neighborhood, but throughout the city, who are not members of boards and commissions, when do they get an opportunity to discuss, first of all, what's there, what their concerns are with us? So, however we go forward, I think we need to build in town hall meetings and things like that going forward, and I'd like to see that in any schedule that we finalize. The third issue on first or second reading is partly a legal issue. We're advised that any significant changes from first to second reading would require a first reading, so if you're a proponent of this project, and in fact, you should have gone back to first reading and you went to second reading, then you will have wished you to have gone back to first reading. So, my question is, as a city attorney, and you don't need to answer this tonight, but have you reviewed all the ramifications of not going back to first reading? And again, I think, I think the exact process moving forward isn't being decided tonight. I think we have a proposal from the City Manager that suggests lots of opportunities for public input, which I fully support, but I do think there's a legal issue here, which I'd be interested in getting your impression on. So, you know, as I said, you don't need to give it tonight, but that's a key question as to whether you go forward on the second reading or on first reading. I happen to prefer a first reading because I think it builds in additional community input. I don't think it needs to delay the project. I think we've set forth a timetable that will, that will be a reasonable timetable. But I just, before we make any final decisions, I want to make sure that we've built in lots of opportunities for general public input. And then, secondly, I want to just have a legal issue resolved for us, perhaps in a written memo. Okay? Thanks. Then, let's see. I think that's, that's all the questions I had right now for the City Manager.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? If not, why don't we move to the first item on the agenda? Madam Clerk?
We have TO 15-10, Ordinance Awarding a Non-Exclusively
We have TO 15-10, Ordinance Awarding a Non-Exclusive 30-Year Franchise to Use Public Property to Provide Power Within the Corporate Limits of the City of Falls Church to the Successful Bidder.
Okay. This is as to do with the bids for the, the power, the electric contract, and I'm going to go ahead and read this statement. Bid number one is from Dominion Electric, doing business as Dominion Virginia Power. Dominion Virginia Power proposes to provide electric utility services within the City of Falls Church under the terms of the Electric Utility Franchise Agreement that was given first reading on July 27, 2015. Those terms are for a 30-year non-exclusive franchise. In addition to those terms, the bid includes payment of $5,000. Yeah, thank you. Is there anything else I need to do procedurally? Some of this has to do with the required statutory procedures for following a bid such as this.
No, that's all. You just need to read a brief description of the bids, and we've only received that one bid.
Excellent. Okay, so is there a staff report on this?
Just briefly, I'd like to note for the record, in addition to the comments made by the city attorney, the state code also requires advertisement in a local paper, and that was done properly for the two required consecutive weeks, enter on file in the city clerk's office. Since one bid was received and is consistent with the terms and conditions in your first reading, staff does recommend approval of the motion to approve TO 15-10 versus delaying it to September meeting. There is no change to the staff report from first reading. This staff report does consolidate or summarize the terms and conditions, as well as the past history working with our current electric provider. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions and respond to comments, as well as I'd like to note that Travis Cutler from Dominion Virginia Power is present this evening if you have any questions of them.
Thank you. Before any questions, let me go ahead and open this up to the public. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment or address this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Are there any questions or comments from council? Mr. Duncan, Vice Mayor Snyder?
Just one that occurred to me when I drove past the electric pole on West Street. It's not unusual around town to see wires of some sort that are dangling down from the power lines, poles, the power poles. I think those are probably from the other users, you know, the cable companies and so forth, but I'm just wondering, number one, it's unsightly, and, you know, it looks, it looks unsafe, even if it isn't. Does the power company have anything that they can do to take care of that problem on their own when they're maintaining the lines, or is that something that we require Cox and the other wire runners to deal with?
Let me provide an initial response, and then I'll be glad for Mr. Cutler to add any additional. They are, if they're dangling, their communication lines from one of the three cable franchises. If it was a power line, it would be an immediate response, and we'd probably have power outages. Those cable franchisees are supposed to keep those clean and corrected and be proactive on it, and oftentimes, we do find contractors leave it behind, and then the city is, contacts them and gets them back out to clean them up. Anything else from Dominion? It's not that Dominion would go out and correct the other providers' lines. It is something I'm aware of, and we addressed it in the recent Cox franchise agreement, requesting more proactive attention to their lines, at least as we work with the other franchisees.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks a lot. Back several years ago, when we, when the city manager and a few of us spent more time in the emergency operations center than we ever had before or since, there were some major power outages, and we worked with Virginia Power, and I'm impressed with the efforts that they've made to improve and service to the city hall and community center, which are our two key points, the one being an evacuation center and the other being our emergency operations center. And I think there were some very fruitful discussions, and I think they've spent some action on that. Cindy Mester, do you want to comment at all on that generally?
I'd be glad to confer and provide a little extra details. Indeed, we were having some reliability issues, losing power in that one extreme storm for an extended period. Dominion did work to provide some redundancy and some improved service from the main circuit that leaves Arlington 66 and feeds us. So that has been very successful, and since that time, we have not had any outage at city hall. And then on line 35 of the staff report, you'll see some additional efforts that we've done with Dominion in terms of improving service, collaboration, and coordination, and that highlights one key term in the agreement where they will have a service level commitment and regular meetings with us as requested by the city.
Okay, thank you. That's much appreciated. I look forward to voting for this.
Other questions, comments? If not, do we have a motion?
I move approval of TO 15-10.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
And the motion carries six to zero.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Would you call the next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes. We have TR 15-19, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation public improvement bonds.
Welcome.
Happy Monday, council. What you have before you is the request for authorization to issue bonds. What we've done in preparation for this is, we've asked for proposals for private sale as opposed to our normal procedure, which would have been to go through rating agencies and then have a public bond issue. We have received the bids. We have not finalized them yet, but we are requesting authorization to proceed. Our financial advisors have recommended that we go the private placement. We do have eight candidates. We had eight banks that bid on the smaller bond issue of 1.2 million, and we had six that bid on the 5.3 million. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Comments? Do you want to hold that thought for just a second while people are thinking if they have any que, or do you have a question? Okay, Ms. Connolly?
We discussed this in the budget and finance committee meeting and went over all the items that are to be bonded, and all of those items are things that were approved in our 2016 FY budget. So this is the bonding of those items that we planned for several months ago, except for two.
There are a couple of items that we will do by budget amendment because they were not in the FY 16 CIP.
And that's the school bus and the roadbed reconstruction?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions, comments?
Quick question.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks. What roadbed are we reconstructing?
We do have a sheet. If you recall, at the last full council meeting, you were giving, given a road condition map. We will be working off of that. Those roads that have conditions four and five would be the ones that are eligible. I don't unfortunately have the map here, so I could tell you the individual streets, but it was in your packet at the last full meeting.
And Roosevelt Avenue up by the Eden Center is the next targeted roadbed reconstruction project. It's a four-lane road divided, and so we would do one side of the road at a time, so we wouldn't have to close that, that street. But that's, that's a street that's in really bad condition, and it's essentially the same condition that we've discussed on West Street, where it's just asphalt right on clay, and so it doesn't hold up very well. That project would be 50% funded by VDOT and then 50% funded through the proceeds of this bond issuance if it gets council approval tonight.
I see Mr. Henderson here, and at one point, within the past year or so, he made a comment about Maple Avenue being an issue with regard to the condition of that road. Is that somewhere in the planning?
Maple Avenue is an identified street that, that we would do for repaving, for milling and paving. We do not anticipate that we'd need to do a full roadbed reconstruction on Maple Avenue because it doesn't rise to that level, but milling and paving, yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I'm going to go ahead and open this to the public. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address this item? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Are there any other questions or comments from council? If not, why don't we go ahead and entertain a motion? Anyone has so moved?
I'll move to approve TR 15-19.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
And the motion carries six to zero.
Okay. Why don't we go on to the next item?
All right. We have TR 15-14, A Resolution Approving Amendment to Voluntary Concession, Number 10, to authorize a name change from Reserve at Tanner Hill to Lincoln at Tanner Hill.
Do we have a staff report?
Mr. Lauren Bruce prepared the staff report on this, and he can speak to the item. I'll just summarize it very briefly as he's coming to the microphone. In the voluntary concessions, that were part of, part of the special exception for the, the project at Tanner Hill, in the voluntary concessions, it did state that the name of the project would be the Reserve at Tanner Hill. And the reason for that was that the council worked very hard with the community to make sure that the project reflected the history of that part of our city and celebrated that history and told the story of that, of that history. And, and so that's the reason why that was in the voluntary concessions. In addition to the, the name, there are other measures in the voluntary concessions laying out other things that needed to be done on the project, like preservation of the arch, streetscape improvements, and historical markers, and other things that Mr. Bruce can speak to in more detail as to what the project will provide. But so the only thing that is requested to change with this resolution is the name itself, which would go from the Reserve at Tanner Hill to the Lincoln at Tanner Hill. I would note, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bruce, but Mr. Richard Rose is here in the audience, as well as representatives of the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation and, and Catch, who have been working with, with the developer on exactly how the, the story will be told through, through this project, and how this history will be reflected, and, and they may want to speak on this item as well. But Mr. Bruce?
It's my understanding that the name Reserve at Tanner Hill was in response to a former investor who's no longer connected with this project. Lincoln property is, the word Lincoln is a trade name for Lincoln properties. For example, in the, on line 24 of the staff report, we provide a couple of examples, Lincoln at Fair Oaks, Lincoln at Tyson's Corner, so forth. And, but because the language is in the report, as the city manager just explained, in order to change the name, we need council's approval to ratify this, so.
So on one hand, it's a very simple change, but because of the discussions that have been going on with the community about all the various different ways that the history is going to be reflected in this project, you know, if the council has any questions about that or wants any more information about that, I think the staff report is pretty thorough in its treatment of the topic, but we'd be happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information.
Thank you very much. It looks like we probably have a speaker coming forward. Before we get to that, I see Mr. Henderson's in the back of the audience. Do you have anything that you wish to say to council? Or representative from Catch, for that matter? Welcome.
Yes, I hadn't prepared remarks, but we do have a letter that is basically outlines the community involvement regarding this issue. I think that what I would like to say is that there have been various discussions over several months now, which have helped to clarify Number 10, the voluntary concessions. I always felt it was a foregone conclusion that they were going to get the name changed anyway, but I'd like to say that I'm very happy that the representatives from Lincoln helped to clarify some language, which we thought was rather vague as far as the voluntary concessions. So that being said, we have given our, what would you say?
Blessings?
Blessings to the name change, and we're looking forward to the development's completion. I did have one question, though, regarding the drawings that I'm seeing and the construction that I'm seeing, especially at the corner of Maple and Tanner Hill. According to the drawings, there is a doorway there and some kind of an opening, but it seems like the construction is solidly bricked in. So I'm wondering, how is that going to jibe with the plans that we've been seeing for the development at the corner of Maple and Tanner Hill Road? That being said, yeah, just want to say thank you for everyone's due diligence in addressing this matter.
Thank you very much. Is there someone from Catch who also wishes to speak? You don't have to, but if there is anyone here, I'll give you the opportunity. If not, I've got a public speaker, Ms. Rohini Winters. You're welcome to speak, and I tip the applicant would like to address council. You're welcome to. If you don't want to, that's fine as well. Good evening.
Good evening. Rohini Winters, 324 Grove Avenue. I just want to take this opportunity to comment on the resolution because this is exactly the kind of collaboration that we would hope to see in other project redevelopments. There's been a lot of angst and anxiety over the name change, dropping the name Tanner Hill from this project, and so a lot of people are going to be very pleased to know if this motion can, or this resolution is, is adopted today because this is about preserving what we do have in the City of Falls Church, keeping some of what we know, some of what people who lived here 60 years have known all their lives, maybe. And this is the, this is the kind of conversation that my neighbors and I are having about, you know, where are they raising their families, where are they going to come back to when they've, when they're grown, and will they still recognize their hometown? So appreciate what the city and the developer and the community who have been involved in this one have managed to do, and I hope that we can do similar things in the future with a project that's dear to my heart, Mason Row. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address this matter? The applicant as well. If you, if you wish to speak, you're able to. If you don't want to, that's fine as well. Welcome, Mr. Rose.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I just heard her say, we, there was never any intention of ever dropping Tanner Hill out of the name. It was always the Reserve at Tanner Hill or Lincoln at Tanner Hill. So any false impression of that is completely wrong, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any questions or comments from council? Ms. Connolly, did you have something? I'm sorry, you look like you're pressing your microphone. Why don't we go Vice Mayor Snyder and then Mr. Z?
Mr. Mayor, we did have a question about the, the, what is it, Maple and Mr. Mayor, we did have a question about the, the, what is it, Maple and Tenner Hill, if there was going to be an opening there. I think Mr. Henderson asked about that.
Sure. Do we have, do we have an answer for that question?
Yeah, we, we can speak to it. My recollection from the site plan is that there is not an opening at Maple and Tenner Hill, but the opening is at Tenner Hill and Washington Street.
Well, it's the, I think what you're talking about is the loading dock for the Fresh Market, which is at the corner of Tenner and Maple. And the only reason it looks like it's solid now is that we dried in the building, and so as those doors and, as you can see, the windows are pretty much covered up at this point, too. So as the windows and doors come in, that will come down and the doors will be in.
But in terms of the public access into the grocery store, that is at the intersection of, of Tenner and Washington. And that's, you know, that's had a lot of attention focused on it because that's the location of the arch. There was discussion of potentially moving the arch at some point, and after working through all the details, the arch is going to stay where it is and then be treated in a way that's very respectful of the arch in a way that I think will work well, but the entrance to the store will be very close to that corner as well.
Thank you. Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. All of this happened before I joined council this time, but, so it's not completely clear to me, and may not be completely clear to the public either, but it would appear that the physical attributes of what it means to have Tenner Hill associated with this project have either been maintained or enhanced, and, and I haven't heard anything to the contrary. But with respect to what's in the name, I would like maybe a small explanation of what the difference is between the Reserve at Tenner Hill, how that became called the Reserve, and, and the name changed now, which is, to my way of thinking, more of a mercantile perspective on what the development is. I don't have a problem with that, per se. I just would like to know what Reserve meant.
In the past, really, the emphasis was never on what preceded Tenner Hill. It was having Tenner Hill in the name, and that was a part of the voluntary concessions to promote and preserve the history of Tenner Hill. But in the past, we had done many, many jobs with EQR, another apartment developer, and they did not want the name Lincoln in their name because they were going to end up buying the properties from us. And so that's where the Reserve came from. And now that they are not involved in this project, we'd like to go back to our branding, which is Lincoln at. And so we have Lincoln at Discovery Square. We have Lincoln at Fair Oaks. And so that's kind of a, probably 60% of our properties are our brand name, and that's what we call them.
Okay, so what you're saying is that elimination of the word Reserve, in your opinion, doesn't take anything away from this project, per se, with respect to the heritage that it's supposed to celebrate?
Absolutely not.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Otherwise, do, did you have some, Mr. Duncan?
Well, I just, you know, want to say that I'm wildly enthusiastic about this for reasons that I would like to read into the record. The name Reserve at Tenner Hill was originally suggested by some observers as suggesting exclusivity, and thus it seemed inconsistent with what the heritage of Tenner Hill represents, namely the inclusion and integration of the African-American community located in that area of Falls Church. Indeed, all of the residential developments like this one created by Lincoln contained the description, "The Reserve." Term was designed to suggest exclusivity, privacy, et cetera. I think this is an improvement. I think it's, it is a trade name, obviously, Lincoln. It's fortunate that your trade name is, you know, not, oh, I don't know, Mosby or something like that, something that would not be an appropriate name. But I think it's an improvement, the, you know, Great Emancipator and Tenner Hill seem like a, a good wedding of names, and everybody, when I talk about the building, understands exactly where it is when you say, that's the one over at Tenner Hill. And I think that probably is the way most people will refer to it when it gets built, but I think Lincoln at Tenner Hill has a nice ring to it.
Okay, anything else? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve TR 15-14.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Congratulations. Okay, let's go on to the consent items. Who's going to do those?
I will do those. There are three items on consent relating to compensation. The first is resolution setting compensation for the city manager for fiscal year 2016. The second is resolution setting compensation for the city attorney for, for the same fiscal year, and the third is the resolution setting compensation for the city clerk. I would just say that the council has conducted its annual evaluations for the three employees that report directly to the city council, and, and I appreciate the council's attention to that.
Did we do appointments as well? Did you mention appointments? I don't?
The, the appointments are listed on the, on the agenda. And, Mr. Z, if you would like to report from the appointments committee?
Well, thank you for that. Along with the consent items, what's included here on the calendar for consent would be sub four appointments. We have new appointments, Grace Paris Starbird for the Fairfax Area Commission on Agent, Corey Forreston Weis, Environmental Services Council, Diane Dugan, Architecture Advisory Board, Barbara Testner, Tree Commission, and reappointments, Charlie O'Hara, Recreation and Parks Advisory Board, Sarah Bolden, Environmental Services Council, and Julie Peterson, the Girls Home Advisory Board. Thank you.
Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? I'm sorry, Ms. Conley?
The third reappointment is Julia Peterson, J-U-L-I-A.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to address these items? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the items on consent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
And the motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other business that we ought to be discussing that? Anyone on council have any items?
Mr. Mayor, relating to the last item, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Conley for spearheading the evaluation effort and bringing that home. Thank you for your extra efforts.
Okay, any other comments?
Oh, don't forget to donate to school supplies through the Backpack Program, which is running to August 17th, I think, down in Human Services. So.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. Over the course of the past couple of weeks, there have been several business openings in the city, and many of us attended the events indicating their ribbon cuttings, and we're very pleased that, that they're here. Also, one of our citizens asked for a visioning session like they have held with the school, and I wondered if that's something we might talk about when we get back together in September to deal with long-term development issues and maybe clear the air about what the financial returns have been or not been, short-term and long-term, with regard to the developments that we've seen so far, because as we know, there are a fair number that are in various stages of consideration. Thank you.
That sounds like a good idea. Thank you. Is there anything else? Okay, why don't we go ahead and maybe have a motion to go into closed session? We do have a matter, one matter in closed session. We'll come out of closed session briefly, hopefully briefly. Two matters in closed session? Okay, so this is the one that we'll be reading off of. Okay. Upon a motion made by councilmember...
Oliver.
And seconded by councilmember...
Conley.
And passed by a voice vote of the city council, council went into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7, closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7, for purposes of consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the advice of council, in particular, potential appeal of the Board of Zoning Appeals, July 16, 2015 decision in A 1569-15, and Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3, discussion or consideration, consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held real property where disposition in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Councilmember Baruch is absent. Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Z?
Yes.
Councilmember Tarter?
Yes.
Okay. Where are we going to do this closed session, or what do you propose? Back room? Okay. Thank you all for coming. You're welcome to stay. We're going to go in the back room for a few minutes, and we'll be coming back out, hopefully not too long, to wrap up the meeting tonight. But thank you all for coming out. Let's go ahead and try to wrap up. Upon a motion made by councilmember...
Conley.
And seconded by councilmember...
Oliver.
And passed by a voice vote of city council, council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Baruch is absent. Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Z?
Yes.
Councilmember Tarter?
Okay.
So certification, upon a motion made by councilmember...
Conley.
Seconded by councilmember...
Oliver.
Passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session, it was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the city council. Councilmember Baruch again absent. Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Z?
Yes.
Councilmember Tarter? Okay, the time coming out is 9:04. All right, so we are back in open session, and do we have a motion based on our closed session? Does anyone wish to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council authorize and direct the city attorney to appeal the July 16, 2015 decision of the Falls Church Board of Zoning Appeals in A 1569-15 to the Circuit Court of Arlington County, and to take any actions the city attorney deems necessary or appropriate in furtherance of such appeal.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote?
Yes, Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
No.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Abstain.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one with one abstention.
Okay, is there any business not on the agenda we should be discussing? Any council member comments? Do we have any minutes for this go?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there anything else? Anyone has? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming out tonight.